Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting, April 20th, 2004. If we could please come to order. If you could stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Father, may we see your truth and love and find hope in place of adversity. Our faith in you will carry us past any challenge we face. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in all.
First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held April 13th, 2004. If there are no changes or corrections to the minutes, we're ready to entertain a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item 2A, Resolution, I'm sorry, number 04-120. Madam Secretary, if you could please read the resolution.
Resolution number 04-120. A resolution congratulating Nora Porter on winning the St. Lucie County Scripps Howard Spelling Bee at the Port St. Lucie Community Center on Thursday, February 12th, 2004, and wishing her success in the national competition to be held in Washington DC in May 2004. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. On February 12th, 2004, Nora Porter, 10 years of age and a 5th grader at Port St. Lucie Elementary School, beat out 35 other spellers who took first place at their respective schools when she won the St. Lucie County Scripps Howard Spelling Bee at the Port St. Lucie Community Center. Nora will now travel to the national competition in Washington DC in May of this year. This board believes that Nora Porter should be recognized for her outstanding performance in winning the St. Lucie County Scripps Howard Spelling Bee. Now therefore, resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, this board does hereby congratulate Nora Porter on her winning the St. Lucie County Scripps Howard Spelling Bee at the Port St. Lucie Community Center on Thursday, February 12th, 2004, and this board wishes Nora Porter success in the national competition which will take place in Washington DC in May of this year.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the resolution, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes and we have a resolution here. Is Ms. Porter here? Would you like to come forward, please, and receive it?
Madam Chair, I have something to present Nora. Nora, could you come over here, please? When you go to Washington, we want you to wear an official St. Lucie County hat.[221.12][221.12](laughter) Also, Madam Chair, Nora is the niece of Mike and Ann Bowers.
Well, congratulations to all of you. We're all very proud of her, so we gave her a silly hat. I think that's cool. Moving on to item 2B, a presentation by Ken Jowelli, Natural Resources Extension Agent.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ken Jowelli. I'm the University of Florida's Natural Resource Extension Agent for St. Lucie County, and I'm here tonight to share the results of a project the Extension Office recently undertook. In February 2004, the Extension Office, in conjunction with St. Lucie County Schools and Walgreens, conducted the St. Lucie County Natural Resources Photo Contest. This contest was open to all St. Lucie County students ages 5 to 18. The purpose of this contest was to encourage local youths to go out and explore our county's natural environment using their photography skills. It's our belief that this project would enrich the students' understanding of the importance of preserving our county's natural beauty. A photo contest flyer was developed. The flyer was sent to the school board offices and was distributed to all St. Lucie County schools. In addition, the flyer was distributed to private schools and homeschoolers. Students were given a list of suggested photo topics including agriculture, wildlife, plants, water, insects, and marine. Each student could submit up to five color photo entries. All photos must have been taken in St. Lucie County and feature our natural resources. The Extension Office received several dozen photo contest entries. Our county's Natural Resources Advisory Committee members served as judges and selected the top five winning entries. The first-place winning entry received a $50 cash award. All winners will receive free film and photo processing services from Walgreens at 2501 Virginia Avenue. Winners can receive their film prize from Walgreens during the next two weeks by contacting Mike Rower, Walgreens manager. In addition, Profile Fine Arts and Custom Framing has volunteered to mount and frame a poster for each winner. I'm pleased to announce the winners of the St. Lucie County Natural Resource Photo Contest. First-place winner is Mariah Jenkins. Mariah, if you can come on up and we'll give you a certificate.[386.31][386.31](applause) Congratulations. Why don't you just stand up here for a minute? Runners-up include Caitlin Fallon, age 12. Oh, and by the way, Mariah is 10 years old and she's a homeschooler. Caitlin Fallon, age 12, is from St. Michael's School. Congratulations. And I'm not sure if Catlin Barker is here. Catlin is here.[423.61][423.61](applause) Catlin Barker, age 13, from Forest Grove Middle School. The winning photos were so impressive that the judges asked me to create the following "St. Lucie County's Natural Beauty Through Our Children's Lens." This poster was made possible with the assistance of Bob Houston with the University of Florida Indian River Research and Education Center and A&amp;T Printing. Funds were raised to print 100 posters, more than enough to ensure that each school in St. Lucie County will receive one poster. Posters will also be distributed to public areas. The public can also receive a poster from the Extension Office while supplies last. I'd like to give the students congratulations and a round of applause. Job well done. Good job.[481.33][481.33](applause) Would the Commissioners like to make any comment to the kids? Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank them for the lovely pictures. They are certainly beautiful and we're very proud to have such creative people. I personally cannot take a picture to save my soul, so I am very impressed. Thank you, Ken. Moving on, we have a lot of young people from our county this evening participating. Maxine Green and her group Granny's Gang will make a brief presentation of their concerns. There you are, Ms. Green.
Good evening, County Commissioners and through the audience. We really thank you for giving the youth the opportunity of coming here tonight to express with you some of the major concerns that our youth have that live in the county of St. Lucie. My name is Maxine Green and I am the President of the Granny Gang to Save Generations, and each of the young people will introduce themselves. They are juniors and seniors of Westwood High predominantly, and they are members of the Youth Leadership of Tomorrow Committee. So I'm going to now give them the opportunity to share with you what their concerns are. Jarrell is our youth coordinator and he will start by introducing himself. Jarrell.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone in respective places. My name is Jarrell Anderson. I attend Fort Pierce Westwood High School. And my concern today is Angle Road. By it being a school on Angle Road, there are no sidewalks. The lighting is terrible. It's nighttime, you can't see anything. Past, we had friends who've been killed on that road because of the lighting and no sidewalks for pedestrians, and that's what I want to bring to everyone's attention today. Angle Road going towards Westwood High School. If I feel that we should, you know, put some lighting or put a light there since there's a four-way crossing. We've had police killed there because of no lining, no stoplights, no traffic lights. He's just there directing traffic and the cars speed through, you know, just do their own thing. And I feel that by it being a school, a public school, that it should be sidewalks and other different things there for the pedestrians as far as students walking to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you.[674.73][674.73](applause)
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Merricks. I am a junior at Fort Pierce Westwood High School and I am the Assistant Youth Coordinator with Granny's Gang. My concern today is for the Lincoln Park area. My grandmother is a resident on the 2100 block, and I'm really concerned with the crime in that area. I feel like there's not enough being done in order to help stop the crime or at least get it under control. For an example, my grandmother's house has been shot in on a couple of different occasions, and there's also been, as the, I guess, the guys out there, as they run from the police and everything, they're running through her yard and it really is scaring me because, you know, it's my grandmother. And, you know, just like anyone else would have a concern if it was their house or one of their loved ones, and, you know, the crime in Fort Pierce is a big problem. And I just feel like there's not enough being done, and, you know, I'm really, I hate to say, I'm tired of seeing my loved ones and friends killed, but, you know, at one point you want to see an end to it. You want to see something being done in order to help correct the problem or at least to get it under control or at least to help stop it. So that's basically my main concern is for the crime in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.[771.88][771.88](applause)
Good evening. My name is Precious Merricks. I am a freshman at Westwood High School and I also, I'm also a part of Granny's Gang. And my concern also is about Angle Road in front of Westwood High School because there are no stop signs. There are, there is a two-way stop sign, but I think it should be a four-way stop sign because kids walk home every day from school. And some, like, people don't really listen to the crossing guards that much as I watch them. And so I think that we should put some, we should put four-way stop signs in front of Westwood because, for the kids' safety, and I think we also need sidewalks because when the kids walk home, people, people also, they don't, like, they don't watch where they're going that much. And they'll come around the corner fast and stuff, and they don't, it's like, I don't know, it's like people don't care these days like they used to, and I think we need stop signs and sidewalks, and also I like, and that's it.
Thank you.[849.82][849.82](applause)
Good afternoon. I'm Angelo Morvell. I'm the youth coordinator for votes and stuff, and I want to tell you about a friend I had, what I had. His name was Ellisite Musson, and about two years ago, he was coming home or whatever on Angle Road, and a car hit him and nothing was done about it or anything. That's a friend we were supposed to go off to college and do stuff with, but today he's not going to be with us anymore. Member of the band, played freshman football with him. And because that light wasn't there and nothing's being done there, and there's no lights, no nothing, just a blinking yellow light. And some, I know some of you guys are like familiar with Angle Road and F, there's a five-way lane there, there's no lights, just two stop signs. Constant traffic, and I drive back and forth to school or I have to come, the bus drops me off on Angle Road and F after school or whatever because I play basketball and I play football and different sports. And once the bus drops you off, it's you against the, about 50, 60 cars coming at you every angle. There's no stop signs, just, I think it's two, one on F and one on Angle Road. Once you get off the bus, it's basically, it's you against the world. And I think if we would've had a light or a stop sign or something there, my friend would probably be here today. But because that happened, we're not going to get to do anything. And I really think we should get a light there, and I appreciate if someone hurry up and do something about that. Thank you.[934.76][934.76](applause)
Good evening to everyone. My name is Elliot Virgin. I'm a junior at Fort Pierce Westwood High School. And my concern today is about the community centers for teenagers in St. Lucie County. Me as being a teenager in St. Lucie County, I feel as if that we don't have enough, we don't have enough activities for teenagers as compared to Martin County and, and Port St. Lucie, and Indian River County, excuse me. So that's one of my concerns today, and I feel as if we at St. Lucie County need to get on a level in which that we should feel the same way and have the same opportunities as children in Martin, in Indian River County, excuse me, in Martin County. Thank you.
Thank you.[988.61][988.61](applause)
Good evening. I thought I may as well put my add to the list. I'm Betty Merricks. I'm a citizen of St. Lucie County, and I pay taxes. And I would first like to stress, you know, about the crossing from Westwood, the school crossing, what the kids have already brought to your attention. We live in the zone where there is no busing from 41st Street west of, west of 41st Street. There's no busing zone, so there are a lot of kids that walk home, and they do need to put sidewalks, and we do need a four-way stop sign for the safety of all. My second concern is paving in that area. I live on 41st Street between 41st and 42nd on Avenue R. Part of that area is paved, but I would like to see the part where I'm located paved. Now, I live at 4105 Avenue R., and I would like to see a paved street, and 42nd Street paved.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1094.13][1094.13](applause)
I really thank you for hearing the young people and parents talk about the concerns in our county. So often we have meetings where they come and express them to us, and there isn't anything we can do about their concerns. We can't put a stop sign on any of the roads. We can't do any sidewalks, but I think that we can bring it to your attention so that we can stop the problems that we have. We can stop the killings. We can stop the accidents and give more concern about what is needed in our community. Lincoln Park area particularly. I don't know what you're going to do, and I know that you showed a concern by having them come and that you're listening to their concerns. Hopefully, we will hear back from you very soon. I do know that Mr. Anderson, the county administrator, had come over and shared with us many concerns that he has worked out, some concerns about youth having somewhere else to go by keeping the recreation center on 13th and Avenue M. open on Saturday evenings later than it has been. However, Mr. Anderson, we need something during the week as well, but we are appreciative that you are giving concerns. We would also like to give thanks to our Commissioner Bruin, who has attended the Concerned Citizens Meeting for over a year now, and when he isn't there, he sends an administrator, his administrator. And I know that you have been listening to us, but I thought it was important that you would listen to the youth tonight, and again, I thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm sure they would be happy to answer you.[1238.83][1238.83](applause)
Do you have a comment, Commissioner Hutchinson? Yes? First off, I wanted to say, give my thanks to the group that came here tonight. That took a lot of, to come up here. It's hard sometimes, and I think you did a great job. But following up on some of the concerns with the sidewalk, Mr. Anderson, don't we have a bicycle and pedestrian group that we've actively tried to involve the youth in the county in?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, yes. And also, we've had some meetings with school representatives regarding the Westwood area, and we're working on a plan to come up and address the, to try to come up and address the sidewalk problem, the stop sign problem. So we are working on something that we'll be bringing back to you.
Okay, go back to the Board that we've got through the MPO, I believe it is, on the pedestrian and bicycle paths. Are there any openings or is there an opportunity that the meetings could be set at a time which groups such as this that are interested could attend and give their input?
Of course. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. First, again, I want to thank the same group, and a lot of young people think you can't change government, and just in the last year or so, groups like yourselves have come and petitioned us to either create laws or change laws, and in fact, after public hearings, we adopted them because we thought they were a good idea. And a lot of times you get frustrated because it can't happen immediately, and I can tell you, our frustrations up here are the same. Whenever we try to accomplish something, it seems like, and certainly this is no criticism of staff, but government just takes a while to move, but it seems like it takes sometimes years to accomplish. But I recall about two years ago, a group of teens came up and asked us to make cigarettes beyond the reach of the counter. In other words, put them back so that mainly kids can't steal cigarettes, and we did that. Also, I think it was school kids, teens who came up and wanted us to open a beach park to dogs, and we did that. And it was a good idea. We, I believe that's been a great success. We haven't had the problems that a lot of people predicted. So there are a lot of things you can do, and I would ask that we take a real good look at the Angle Road area. Also, look at the impact fee balance for that zone. I guess it was about six or seven years ago in Lakewood Park that a child was almost killed by a truck on King's Highway, and a lady collected 2,000 signatures and asked us to do something about it. And it took a while, but six years later, we have a state-of-the-art, wonderful bike path in Lakewood Park that runs the whole length of the community. And I know Mr. Bruin's been working hard for this area, and we've got a lot of improvements there, but please take away from the meeting tonight that it may take a while to change things that you would like to change, but it can be done. So again, why don't we, are we going to update this group or ask them to come back when we present our plan? In other words, let's just make sure we communicate with the group so they can see what their requests have, you know, what has produced.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barnes, every one of their concerns I've written down. We'll begin addressing them tomorrow, and then we will invite them back.
Great.
One of the comments that I would like to address, well, actually, there are a couple of them. First of all, if there are more activities north and south of us, I know we have recently opened the Lincoln Park Community Center for longer hours and different times on the weekend. If there are more teen activities north and south of us, maybe we can look into their plans, their programs, and see what they have, if it's something we can adopt that would suit your needs better. I'd also like to, in comment to the young lady, Ashley Merricks, I believe it was, who addressed the crime in the Lincoln Park area. I do sit on the task force for the Weed and Seed Group. There are a lot of activities going on. I know there have been task forces, and I know it must seem like an awful slow process when it's your grandmother that's living there. Believe me, there are a lot of people who are very concerned about that and truly trying to make a difference. I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm saying, please don't give up. Keep adding your voice to the chorus, but there are things being done. And I know it's, as Commissioner Hutchinson said, it's really hard to get up in front of a group sometime. You all did very well, and I truly appreciate your taking the time to come here. As Commissioner Barnes just said, I wish we could just say, okay, we'll take care of that tomorrow, but it doesn't work quite that way, but I promise we will keep you in the loop and let you know what's happening. You're, please, did not fall on deaf ears here this evening. So thank you all. If there are no further comments to the young folks, we will move on to the, oh, and thank you, Mrs. Green, for saying they got here. I've lost track of you now, but I know you're out there somewhere. Mr. Anderson, could you please read the announcements for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A public meeting will be held on May 6th at 5:00 PM in Room 101, which is next to the Civic Center, to accept public comment on the Federal Aviation Regulation Part 150 noise study for the St. Lucie County International Airport. The county's annual auction of surplus vehicles has been scheduled for May 15th and will be held at 3071 Oleander Avenue in Fort Pierce, which is at our compound. The auction begins at 10:00 AM, but the gates open for a preview at 9:00 AM. Also, I have one additional announcement. On June 29th, there will be a mining workshop, that's regarding mining within the county, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in these chambers. That concludes the announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, which is general public comment. There are a number of public hearings this evening. If you have comments on those items, it would probably be more appropriate to wait until they come before us, but if you have comments on anything else, now would be the time to come forward and tell us about it, please.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, and to whomever it may concern. My name is Peter Polizato. I have lived in this general area since 1958 and presently live at 6034 Inzrio Road, Unit L4, Indian Pines Village, a condominium, a nonprofit corporation. I have a problem understanding the zoning laws of the county of St. Lucie. I do not understand when an area is zone residential that the county still allows a business to operate in an area zone residential. A business such as a real estate office is allowed to function in spite of rules and regulations of our condominium, which by the way, those rules and regulations are recorded with the state of Florida. To me, this is a conflict of law. I'm not a lawyer, but to me, it's still a conflict. Your zoning laws and regulations are in conflict with our condominium laws and regulations, which applies. We don't know what to do. Our condominium regulations state that all unit owners agree to abide by the rules of the association, all owners. No unit shall be used for any purpose other than residential. All valid laws, zoning ordinances, and regulations of government bodies have jurisdictions shall be observed. All of the above regulations are being violated, mostly because of the granting of home usage under the county zoning regulations. Granted that the county requires a business such as real estate to operate, providing that they do not create traffic, but the zoning enforcement department cannot afford to place an inspector at one of these offending offenders, places of business, to see whether they are causing traffic, but I see it every day. If you cannot enforce the regulations, well, good are they? I do not wish to take up much more of your commission time, but do wish to ask the commission I do not wish to take up much more of your commission time, but do wish to ask the Commission to tell me which rules and regulations are the right ones, ours, which are registered with the state, or the county's zoning regulations which conflict with the community of Indian Pines Village. Thank you for listening, and I hope the Commission rectifies this conflict of law soon. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McIntyre, do we have any ready answer to that sort of a conflict?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, and certainly I can expand on this in a letter if, if need be. Uh, the county's zoning laws are different from, um, private deed restrictions or covenants or condominium restrictions. They're, they're just different. They're both applicable, um, but they're different. The county's zoning laws are done under the police power. They're done in, on behalf of the entire citizens. They're very typically general. Uh, they, they tell what type of land use, what type of zoning. Uh, and they're done, and they have the force and effect of law. They're typically done by ordinance, and they have the force and effect of law. The, things like private deed restrictions, where you have homeowners restrictions, condominium restrictions, are done usually by the developer, the original developer. They come in and they, they come up with, uh, sets of uses that they believe are appropriate. Then people buy, and they buy subject to those private restrictions. They're applicable, but they're not enforced by the county. They're enforced by the, the residents or the homeowners association. It really kind of depends on the, how the documents go. But they're, they're are, uh, they're totally different than what the county's perspective is. And the county does not enforce private deed restrictions. We don't have the legal ability to do that, or standing to do that. That's, has to be done by the condominium association, a private unit owner, homeowners associations, whoever has the benefit of those deed restrictions. So that's a short answer to the question.
Thank you, sir. I think that was pretty much an answer in brief, the, the situation being that the county enforces our ordinances. Anything else would need to be enforced by the private sector. Yes, sir?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Philip Stickles. I live at 10800 Carlton Road. Um, I want to thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for acknowledging the concerns of all the people at Weston Carlton and Glades Cut-off Roads in regard to the proposed Dickerson Mine Petition. This is a serious concern we all have out there, and as I know, all of you have received numerous emails and letters. I, like so many of the others, do not understand the need for a fourth lime rock quarry in this county. This is a beautiful part of the county that should not be disturbed. Once again, I just wanted to say thanks for slowing this petition to get all the necessary questions answered before proceeding disturbing our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to address the board now? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a collection of items which are voted upon as one. Uh, generally, they're fairly non-controversial, dealing with household sorts of things, uh, housekeeping items. Uh, any item can be pulled by any Commissioner for separate voter discussion. If there, is there anything, any item that, an individual, the Commission, is there any item that any Commissioner would like to pull for separate voter discussion, please? If there are no questions this evening, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Move approval to consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearings. First is 5A, draft ordinance number 04-007.
Madam Chair, Ms. McKenzie Smith will be handling that item.
Oh, there she is. I was kind of looking for you, and I didn't see you. Sorry.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Catherine McKenzie Smith. What you have before you is draft ordinance 004-007, which would amend the Land Development Code to adopt the code enforcement mechanism that is in the St. Lucie County Code and compiled laws. This is a second hearing on this. Um, and what it does is amends it so that the, the mechanisms are exactly the same, changes a couple of things where you can charge things like cost of prosecution. Um, there can be a charge if they transfer it without telling somebody, and there's a code action going on. We can refer it for fraud action. And at this time, we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the board at this point? If there are none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board. If there's no comment, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to 5B, draft ordinance number 04-016.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, Heather Young, Assistant County Attorney. This is the second public hearing on proposed ordinance number 04-116, which would amend the Land Development Code to establish a height limitation for outside storage of intermodal containers. An intermodal container is a type of container which may be loaded on a ship, barge, train, or tractor-trailer. They are currently permitted, uh, storage facilities for these, um, units are currently permitted only in industrial heavy zoning districts and do require a conditional use permit. They're viewed as a warehouse storage facility. Um, the proposed ordinance was originally drafted at the request of the Harvard Advisory Committee with the understanding that the average height of one of these containers was eight feet. Following the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, we received additional information indicating that while the interior dimension of the containers is eight feet, the actual exterior dimensions with the siding and so forth is nine and a half feet. Therefore, the proposed limitation that you had before you originally, and which was taken to Planning and Zoning Commission, of 16 feet would actually only permit one unit. Um, if you wanted to have more than one, or have two, you'd have to have at least 19 feet. The first public hearing on this ordinance was on April 6th. At that time, the board requested copies of the Harvard Advisory Committee meeting minutes dealing with this topic, as well as a copy of the Fort Pierce Ordinance, which establishes a height limitation for outside storage materials of 15 feet. Those were included in your board package. Um, I would say, um, since that April 6th hearing, I know the board members received a copy of a letter from a gentleman who evidently is, is in the industry. It's my understanding, he has a, a business that services tractor-trailers and, and cleans these type of, um, storage containers. Also had some conversations with some other people who use these. Um, there's a concern about the, the impact of the ordinance on the use of these in agriculture and so forth. My recommendation tonight would be if the board is interested in pursuing establishing a limitation, that perhaps we continue this for two weeks, to allow us to address some of these concerns that have come up since the last public hearing.
Were there any questions or comments from the board at this point? There are?
Could we just clarify the, in plain, everyday language, what, how this would change, what the existing law is on these containers, and how it would change it?
Currently, we don't have any high limitation for the stacking of these containers. It's my understanding from talking to the people in code compliance that, and growth management as well, that a facility that stores the containers themselves, what's commonly called a container farm, is only permitted in industrial heavy warehousing now.
Doesn't it have to be, isn't it today a conditional use?
It is a conditional use. Get it for that.
So if it's an inappropriate place, under today's law?
It could be cited.
We could turn it down.
That's correct. And, and there is some issue also about the use of them in agriculture, the, whether that, this would affect that, and the answer is, my understanding is no, because those uses are exempt. However, if a business is using them simply to basically create, use it for a shed rather than building a building to code, they could be cited for it if it's in another, other than industrial heavy, and they don't have the conditional use permit for a large-scale facility to house these storage containers pending their transport back and forth, whether it be by truck or train.
Were there any other questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there any member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this item? Yes, sir?
My name is Lloyd Bell, and I represent some property at the port. I've come here directly tonight from the port where work is proceeding on the dredging of Taylor Creek, and I'm glad to report that everything is going quite well in that department. I would like for you to pay particular attention to this ordinance, because this ordinance is very broad. It does not appear to have been well thought out. It affects everyone in the county. And those areas that you might wish to have the containers which are the wave of the future in transportation, uh, would be preceded by an ordinance which seems to be very untimely, and certainly not in good faith with trying to have an efficient transportation system in St. Lucie County. I'd also like to ask the question, if you say that these are intermodal containers, what about the aircraft containers? Does this only apply to ship containers, or does it apply to all intermodal transportation? And what do you do about the railroad? So I think there's wisdom in the recommendation made by your staff that this be properly addressed and evaluated. Also, I'd like to point out that I personally consider this, would consider any action here, an act of bad faith at a time when we fully expect to be able to bring some resolution to our long desires for the utilization of the port and the mega yachts. Uh, it was the understanding that I've had, that I would cooperate with the county, as long as the county cooperated in good faith. I would consider this a breach of that faith.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, before we get in an argument about whether or not, and, you know, not criticizing Mr. Bell, but before we open an argument whether or not it would be good for the port, let's just keep in mind, this doesn't even apply to the port, whether you're pro or con, for this ordinance, because that's within the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wanted to address this item? Seeing no one?
One of the main points on operating a modern port was to operate, not a port in the old concept, but to operate a terminal. A terminal would require that we remove the intermodal containers to some other point where there would be accepted. They wouldn't even be visible or available to cause the type of problem that's been addressed that you're having at Riviera or at some of the large ports in the country. The whole concept of this port is entirely separate. The idea is that this, as a terminal, would be a pass-through. But there needs to be someplace in the county where those, those containers could be properly addressed. So it, it seems highly inappropriate to apply to our situation.
Thank you. If there's no one else present that wishes to address the board, we'll close the public hearing, which we had to hold this evening. Are there any further comments from other Commissioners at this point?
Madam Chair, I, I think all of us got a letter from, uh, Mr. Craig Munt, showing a very unattractive stacking of, uh, very unattractive containers in Riviera Beach, and certainly, I'm in total agreement that in residential areas like that, it's completely inappropriate. But, um, I don't have any problem with continuing it two weeks as staff has recommended.
If there's no objection from any other Commissioner, we will do that. And I know I shouldn't have to ask, Mr. McIntyre, what are the mechanics of doing that?
I think a simple motion, uh, in second, some of, and that would be, uh, for two weeks would be, uh, May the...
I think it's the 3rd.
May the 3rd, and is, is that a 7 o'clock meeting? And that would begin at 7 o'clock PM, or sooner after, as the item may be heard.
Thank you. I believe while you were speaking, we had a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 5C, draft resolution number 04-080.
Agenda item 5C is the application of Robert Regal for a conditional use permit and major site plan to allow the construction of a 63,000 square foot mini warehouse storage, which will consist of 56,900 square feet of storage area, 2,550 square feet of a manager's apartment and office, and 4,500 square feet of general office space. Your staff report indicated 47,270 square feet. We realized today, when the applicant called me, that there was a typo on their site plan, and they had forgot one of the zeros, so that changed the number for the total square footage in the facility. All of your impacts that were associated with this one were based upon the full 63,000 square hundred, 63,000 square foot facility. As you may recall, on August 19th, 2003, this board approved through Resolution 03179, a variance to allow the facility to encroach 25 feet into the required 50-foot lagoon buffer area. The applicant, after that meeting, went back, redesigned their project, which took all the buildings outside of the 50-foot square foot, 50-foot buffer area, but 10-foot of the roadway is in there, so they've actually taken all the buildings out, redesigned, and came back in with the site plan that met our technical requirements. Section 70904E requires an eight-foot high wall or wooden fence to be constructed when non-residential use is about a residential use. The properties to the north and the south and east are all designated as residential uses, therefore would be required a wall or fence. The applicant has requested a waiver from this requirement, as allowed in this section. As part of the submittal package and included in your, your report, there were letters from the Princess Condominium, Condominium Association, and Nettles Island, Inc., indicating their support for the waiver. There is significant amount of vegetation along the northern property line, um, which is adjacent to the Princess's Condominium wastewater facility and overflow storage area, so therefore, we are requesting approval of this waiver. There are a number of mobile homes located directly south of the subject property within the Nettles Island area. We are requesting that the applicant be required to install the fence in that area adjacent to these residential units unless they can come back into this board with written requested waiver letters from those individual property owners that own those units. The proposed project is not, is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding properties. It is zoned for commercial businesses. It's not anticipated to create any adverse impacts on the natural environment. It has been designed to minimize impacts to the mangrove swamp areas and to the lagoon. It's currently being utilized as a dead storage area facility for boats, recreational vehicles, and automobiles. This will give it a much better and cleaner use on the site. At the March 18th, 2004, public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six to zero, recommend approval of this petition. We do find that the petition meets the standards of review as set forth in Section 110703 of the Land Development Code, and that it is non-conflicted, the goals, objectives, and policies. Therefore, we are recommending approval of draft resolution 04080, subject to the conditions therein, and as always, would like to make the staff report part of the official record.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners at this point? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. I see there is a member of the public that wishes to address us.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Roger Baber with CSM Engineers, and I'm representing the applicant, Bob Regal, North Hutchinson Island Storage, and I'm here to answer any questions and seek approval for the project this evening.
Are there any questions for Mr. Baber? I don't see any at this point in time, sir. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address us on this item? Yes, there is.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Charles Grandy, speaking for the President's Council of Hutchinson Island. As your staff indicated, immediately after the last hearing, when there was a question about incursion into the buffer area, Mr. Regal... about incursion into the buffer area, Mr. Regal voluntarily came to us and asked simply, "How can I make it better?" If you look at the current site plan, the entire footprint of the potential build-out is within the area that's already cleared for use. We would also point out that Mr. Regal is a long-term resident who's been a positive contributor out on the island with communities he developed in the past like Ocean Rise on the Ocean and Regal's Cove on the Lagoon. I've been asked to convey our strong support and ask your approval of the staff recommendation of this project that will provide a much-needed facility for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and return to the board. Any comments at this time? If not, we entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 5D, draft resolution number 04-077.
Agenda item 5D is the application of Travis E. Murphy Jr. for change in zoning from the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District and RS3 Residential Single Family Three-Dwelling Unit per acre zoning district. I'm sorry, from only this Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District to the Commercial Office Zoning District. Originally, this application did come in, including the entire parcel, which is the RS3 portion shown on your map below it under the number 73 and the Commercial Neighborhood. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant did withdraw that request, so the request is strictly for that portion lying immediately adjacent to the southern boundary of West Midway Road to the abandoned alleyway. The purpose of this requested change in zoning is to allow for the continued operation of a general office building and to expand the use within the existing building. The subject property was originally zoned Zone B, which allowed commercial office uses. When the county underwent the comp plan and rezoning efforts in 1980, this property was changed to a Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District, which made the existing building non-conforming. As the applicant has indicated, that desired to expand commercial offices within the existing building, in order to rectify and to be able to do this, a Commercial Neighborhood zoning was sought. The subject property is located in an area with the split zoning designation, Commercial Neighborhood and RS3. The proposed change in zoning would result in an orderly and logical development pattern for this area. The surrounding parcels of the property are designated for residential uses with a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre and with commercial and office uses adjacent to Midway Road. The uses allowed within the proposed CO Commercial Zoning District are not anticipated to negatively impact that surrounding area. The introduction of the commercial office uses within this, within the area is consistent with what we have previously done for this area. At the March 18th, 2004 public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted by a six-to-zero vote approval of the applicant's request as modified at that hearing. We have found that this petition is determined to meet the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, we do recommend approval of draft resolution 04077. As always, would like to make the staff report part of the official record.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this point? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name's Howard Cersey. I'm a business partner of the applicant, Travis Murphy, and I have my office in the subject property. As was pointed out by staff and to further add to what staff said, in 1992, the county issued a certificate of compliance for this building as it was renovated and turned into an office building. There really isn't an expansion of the use of this building. Since 1992, it has been an office building and will continue to be such. So based on that and the fact that this zoning change will rectify a non-compliant situation that was caused by the county, I would urge you to please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, thank you. My name is Krista Story and my husband and I reside at 1305 West First Street. And I think Ms. Snae has addressed my concern, but the draft resolution has as an exhibit to it a map that shows the parcels fronting on West First Street included in the rezoning application. I understand and I noted that the legal description was correct and just encompassed those parcels fronting on West Midway Road, but I just want to confirm that Exhibit A, the map, is going to be corrected as well.
Yes, it will.
Otherwise, the neighborhood had concerns about the rezoning when the residential portion was to be included. We appreciated Mr. Murphy withdrawing that portion. We just wanted to make sure this evening that the official action reflected what we understood to be the intent. And thank you very much.
Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board. Are there any...
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 5E, draft resolution number 04-076.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Hank Flores of the county planning staff, this is the application of Cheryl and Mark Griffin for a conditional use permit to our landscaping and horticultural services, a commercial plant nursery in the agricultural residential one-dwelling unit per acre zoning district for 4.27 acres of property located at 9290 Orange Avenue. Landscaping and Horticultural Services are allowed as conditional uses in the AR1 zoning district, subject to the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. The applicants currently live and must continue to live on the subject site if the conditional use permit is approved. Provided that the proposed conditional use is done in accordance with applicable laws and best management practices, this activity is not anticipated to have any negative effects upon any adjacent lands or interests. At the March 18th, 2004 public hearing on this matter, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the requested conditional use permit with recommendation, with a recommended condition that the applicants obtain releases from the eight-foot wall requirement from adjacent property owners in order to support a waiver from the Board of County Commissioners for the eight-foot wall or fence required between non-residential and residential uses. Staff finds that this petition meets the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code and is non-conflict with the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending that you approve the requested conditional use permit, subject to five limiting conditions. Staff recommends approval of draft resolution 04076, which would grant the conditional use permit. Staff would also like to include the staff report as a part of the official record.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the board at this point? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Did you wish to address the board?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Griffin. I did obtain two releases, waivers, for the eight-foot wall from two of my neighbors and the third one to the east did call Paula Lewis and speak to her on the phone and she did not mention anything about the wall to her. And she decided to stay neutral and not respond to your mailings or to mine, so I don't know what we want to do about that. But I definitely do not want to put an eight-foot wall up against my barrier with hers. It's to the east and that was Hilda Young, 91 years old. She does not reside on the property. The property adjacent to the area I'm going to use as the nursery is not developed. I don't foresee any problem with what we're doing as far as planting the trees because I cannot even plant on her side because of the gas line that goes through my yard. So we don't even intend on using her side of the property barrier to plant the trees at all because of the gas line.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So you're saying you're not able to get a letter from this person or...
She just wants to remain neutral. I did speak to her on the phone and she said that she called here and spoke to Paula and Paula did not mention the condition about the fence to her. And I said to her that, you know, we discussed it at the meeting and I did send her the waiver. I overnighted everybody and I paid for the overnights to come back, so I would have everything ready for the meeting. And she just wants to stay neutral. I don't know if Ms. Young expressed her concerns to Paula on the phone.
If you're, I'm assuming you mean me and I never spoke to Ms. Young. Do we know who Ms. Young did speak to? Does anyone...
She just mentioned your name, you know, when I called her and I was concerned because her waiver was the only one I didn't receive.
Well, I've not spoken to anyone about this. I don't know who, do we have any concept who she might have spoken to?
No, ma'am.
We're not aware who she spoke to at this point. It certainly was not me.
I just wrote down everything she told me because I knew I'd have to report back and we would have to rectify this problem. She lives in Miami.
Well, that answers the question as to whether any members of our staff have spoken to her at all at any point.
I have not.
Well, looking at the requirements, have we ever gotten into this sort of a situation before? I mean, we've asked the applicant to obtain these and she has been unable to do so. Can we take a hand in this perhaps?
I believe we could probably call Ms. Young and speak with her and let her know the situation.
I think that would be appropriate at this point. These are our conditions and if the resident has been unable to obtain any kind of a resolution...
It may be a misunderstanding on her part as well as far as what the waiver is and why she needs to...
Yes, if she, I mean, not to be offensive, perhaps if she's an older lady, she did speak to someone who didn't quite understand what was happening. Thank you, ma'am. We'll have to get into this. Is there some way that we can continue the public hearing perhaps? Would that be an option the board would like to consider at this point in time?
Do you need the original copies of the waivers? Because I would like to have copies of them also.
I imagine they would need to be turned into our staff. They could make sure, I'm sure, that you have copies of them. I don't know if they want to do that this evening or if they would do that another day. You might want to discuss with them how they want to handle that, since our staff obviously didn't know the resolution before this evening either. Any further comments from the board or suggestions to how you might like to proceed? I think since we are going to need to get staff involved, we should probably continue the hearing.
Can we do that now? Have you closed, we close the public hearing or just continue?
No, just continue, I would assume.
Continue again as we always do. Madam Chair, if there's anybody here that wants to speak that can't be here in two weeks on May the 3rd, perhaps we could listen. Otherwise, we could entertain a motion at this point.
Madam Chair, move approval till May 3rd.
Second.
And that's at 7:00 or soon thereafter as the item may be heard.
Madam Chair, I have no problem with continuing, but I would like staff to at least prior to coming back for us, follow up if the resident does not want to sign a waiver and remains neutral, what's the county's stand at that point? You can just bring that back at that time.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, the waiver is still there and ultimately you grant the waiver. There is no legal requirement that I know of for every neighbor to sign the waiver or to agree to the waiver. So I guess you'd have a decision to make at that point.
Well, we just want to verify on it because that was a condition that P and Z had put in there. So we can have our staff make a stab at it and we'll make a determination in May. Do we need a vote on that, Mr. McIntyre? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will move on to 5F, draft resolution 04-082.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hank Flores, County staff. This is the application of Roger Medema for final plan development, site plan approval and a change in zoning from the Plan Unit Development Palm Breezes Club Mobile Home Park zoning district to the Plan Unit Development Palm Breezes Club zoning district for 151 acres of property located on the north side of Orange Avenue approximately 1,800 feet east of the Florida Turnpike. The applicant is seeking approval for 646 conventionally constructed single-family homes in two phases with a three-and-a-half acre commercial phase. Phase one of the project consists of 168 lots. Palm Breezes Club was granted preliminary plan development approval on January 15, 2002. The intent of the plan unit development was to allow for the 646 lot, single-family residential development. On January 15, 2004, the Board of County Commissioners granted a 12-month extension of the preliminary PUD. The subject properties are the location of previously approved projects in 1988 and 1998. In resuming the development plans for the property, the developer has used essentially the same development pattern as the first two projects, except that the developer has increased the amount of contiguous open space and changed from mobile homes to conventionally constructed homes. The developer provided a transportation impact report with the preliminary PUD application. This report assessed the impacts of the development on both Orange Avenue and the major intersections within the subject area. No specific lane capacity improvements are recommended to be required for this project. However, the developer will be required to construct a right-turn lane for westbound Orange Avenue at the project entrance. No left-turn lanes are being required for the entrance since it is anticipated that most of the trips to and from the project will be from the east. The report also identified the need for the construction of two minor intersection improvements. The first improvement is at the intersection of South Jenkins Road and Orange Avenue. The report has identified the need for the construction of a northbound left-turn lane at Orange Avenue. The second improvement is at the intersection of North Rock Road and Orange Avenue. At this intersection, the need for a southbound left-turn lane has been identified. This lane is to be constructed before the build-out of the project. These improvements have also been included as conditions of approval of the final PUD. Staff has determined that the site plan is consistent with the preliminary plan development and the proposed zoning district designation is compatible with the existing and proposed uses in the area. Staff finds that this petition with five limiting conditions meets the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve draft resolution 04082, subject to these five limiting conditions. Staff would also like to include the staff report as a part of the official record.
Madam Chair, may I add just a brief couple of comments to that?
Please.
You had a couple of questions, or board members had a couple of questions about conditions and we've looked at the conditions for roadway improvements, particularly two and five, and we believe that they are adequate and meet the questions that were involved. The third condition that I'd like to make a comment on is number four and the comment really had to do with a future transit stop and we'd like to add language in number four that would require that prior to issuance of building permits in the commercial portion of the project that a transit stop be included so that we get that included in the project and a condition stating so tonight.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the board at this time? If not, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, for the record, I'm Butch Turpining with the firm of Culpeper Interpreting. Also here with me tonight is Mr. Medema, the applicant, Mr. Dan Harold, our counsel for the project, and Mr. Greg Boggs with Tom Lucido and Associates, our land planner and landscape architect. We've reviewed those conditions with your staff and concur. We have also met in regards to the transit stop and have worked out a drop area as part of our site planning process with the school board. The staff felt that this may or may not meet the county's ultimate needs, so we do concur with the addition of that additional transit stop. We'll be more than happy to address any concerns or additional questions that the board may have or the public at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 5G is draft resolution number 04-079.
5G is the petition of Patricia Griffin-Low for a conditional use permit to allow... 5G is a petition of Patricia Griffin-Low for a conditional use permit to allow a riding school within the AR1 Agriculture Residential One Dwelling Unit per Acre zoning district for property located at 7,001 Galati Place. The subject property is 1.25 acres in size and designated with a residential estate land use on the future land use map. The applicant is proposing to operate the riding schools in accessory use to her single-family residence. Within the AR1 zoning district, a riding school would be permitted under the riding stable classification, but the use must undergo conditional use permit. The property to the north of the subject property is located within the institutional zoning district and has a C conservation PUB, Public Future Land Use Designation, and the property to the southeast and west are designated within the AR1 Agriculture Residential One Dwelling Unit per Acre zoning district and residential estate future land use designation. The proposed conditional use permit is not anticipated to create adverse impacts on the natural environment. The riding school will be required to comply with all local, state, and federal regulations concerning its development and operation. At the March 18, 2004, public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this petition by a five to one vote. Staff has reviewed this petition and determined that it conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, we do recommend approval of draft resolution 04-019, subject to the conditions contained therein and would like to make the staff report part of the official record.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Griffin-Low and I'm here to carry forth my goal of the conditional use to be able to provide enjoyment and riding lessons on my parcel with my well-trained horses and I thank you for your considerations.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Jeffrey Schoenfeld. I own the property, within 100 feet of this property, and my concerns that, about this is not having a couple of horses and, and riding. My concerns are the amount of, is there, having a commercial stable there, not, not the fact that there's two horses or whatever. Does this limit the number of horses that are allowed on 1.25 acres? Cause I always felt a riding stable should be on at least a minimum of five acres and how many horses are involved or is there a, a conditional use as far as how many horses would be involved, how big a barn is there? It just seemed like a small piece of property to have a commercial riding stable. I, I didn't know if the staff had any answers for that or not. I was just concerned that it could lower the value of my property.
Thank you. Ms. Nay, do we know whether there are any limitations on the numbers of animals? You said it was, state regulations were applicable?
There are no limitations on the number of animals, but because of our rules on how in, uh, in the zoning district, there can also be no barn. The animals will be, uh, free ranged on the property and, and that won't leave room for many, but there will be no barn and there is no limit on the number of horses.
Yes, ma'am, please. That might help.
I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you.
The way the parcel is set up, I have an awning and a corral that keeps the horses contained. I do not plan on overstocking my parcel with animals. I have two Passifinos and a miniature horse. They are very well kept. I have a 50-foot round training ring and a training field. By all means, I am looking to keep the property values in the neighborhood, so you have no fear I'm not going to be boarding houses, I'm not going to be housing animals. I'm going to use my riding ring and the field and the corral to keep the horses maintained. The, the awning that I have is for shelter for the rain and so when they eat, if there's bad weather, they're out of the elements, but I do not have a barn per se and I, I'm not going to be constructing a barn. I have permits for all of the improvements on my property and I am in violation of nothing. So I appreciate your concern and I agree, there, we're not going to be overstocking animals, boarding animals. It's going to be with my existing horses and my existing riding ring. You're welcome to come over and see my parcel.
Yes, please.
With that in mind, I withdraw my objection.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address this issue?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners. One thing that hasn't been covered on this whole thing is that these are non-county maintained roads. If you're going to open up a business to the public, who's going to maintain these That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes? I'm sorry, I thought someone over there said something that they wanted to be addressed. Okay. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the item? Yes, ma'am?
This issue has come up many times. They are egress and easements that allow travel to the parcel. Obviously, I'm able to get home tonight, so.
And if I understand what's, what's indicated here, there are two horses, so I doubt if we'll have hordes of people tearing up and down the road. I didn't mean to be amusing, but truly. Uh, is, if there's no further comment from the public, is there anyone else that wishes to address us? If there isn't, we'll return to the board, ready to entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 5H, considering the application of Home Dynamics Corporation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Diana Wade with the Planning Department, presenting staff comments. The petition of Home Dynamics is a request for a future land use change on a 35-acre site at the southwest corner of Edwards Road and South 25th Street. The existing future land use is residential urban on 3.2 acres and commercial on the remaining portion of the parcel. The applicant is requesting a future land use change to RH which is residential high that would allow, um, 15 dwelling units per acre or a total of 530 dwelling units. That was the initial application, just before staff's report was sent to you, the applicant did provide a new proposal that, um, provided for three separate future land use classifications that would lower the overall permitted density on the property to 361, which is what they intend to develop there. In staff's review, and I'm going to refer to our initial review, which was of the original residential high application, we reviewed that for consistency with the county's comprehensive plan and we did find that it would be consistent. We have a commercial currently to the north, we have some commercial neighborhood to the east, and the northeast is residential medium. The residential high would be a slightly higher density than is in the surrounding area, but we felt that it could be appropriate and possibly generate less traffic than the Staff also looked at some of the surrounding densities in the area and what's currently developed. To the north, the, um, what used to be Crystal Sands is an apartment complex on the east side of 25th Street, about a half a mile north of this parcel. And that density, it appears, I can't read it very well, 10.3 dwelling units per acre. Now, that's the densest in the surrounding area. Just across the street, we have 7.1 and we have 4.9 dwelling units per acre, um, just south of that. That's an assisted living facility just north of Edwards Road. At this point, I, we would ask you to consider the approval of this. You could set, consider whether you would like to approve, um, this request with the new future land use designations. However, when we looked at that, David did some calculations and determined that actually we could get the same number of dwelling units of 361 that is desired with two future land use classifications. And that would consist of 7.67 acres at 15 dwelling units per acre, that would be the residential high, the 7.67, and 27.33 acres would be RM or nine dwelling units per acre. And that line could be drawn wherever the commission desired.
Madam Chair, just, just for clarification, the second or, or the three banded, if you will, uh, proposal by the applicant, which had some R U, R M, and RH was, was an attempt by the applicant to limit the number of units to the number of units they really wanted to develop. The RH, of course, provides for more units than they want. There is no category in the county that would give them the exact density that they want, so you have to apply for the next one up, which is RH in this case. We understand when we look at something like that, that if they were to get the three bands, they really, the bands themselves have very little meaning other than to limit density. Because if the applicant were then to come in with a PUD, he could, uh, move things around and cluster on the property pretty much as he saw fit and you ultimately approved, so that the bands were not terribly meaningful. Given that, it didn't seem necessary to go to the complexity of having three separate bands. If your intent is to limit the density to 361 units, I think is what the applicant asked for, rather than the 500 and some that RH would support, it's a little easier to do with two classifications than with three, and I did the calculation to, to let you know what those acreages would be.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the board at this point? Madam Chair, I just have a legal concern in light of, so then the staff's not going with the three different areas, zones? Cause you've gotten me confused. You've come in now, the petitioner's come in with a new look, so to speak, in request.
Staff did our analysis and we believe that it is an appropriate place in the county for RH and staff has recommended approval at that level. P&amp;Z expressed concerns over
Right.
the density. In an attempt to address that, the applicant came back with a proposal which limited the density. Staff believes he did that in an overly complex manner and provided a simpler solution to the same thing. We haven't modified our recommendation, which is approval of the RH, but if the board wishes to limit it, we think there's a simpler way and I, I provided that.
Were there any further questions or comments from the board at this point? If not, we'll open the public hearing or is there any member of the public present that wishes to address us on this item? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Mark Mathis. I'm with Lucido and Associates, representing the applicant this evening. And staff fairly represented our position on the matter. Our applicant's goal is to develop a nice combination of townhome and single-family product on the site. Our goal is not to develop 531 units, but approximately 360, and we're amenable to achieving that goal in whatever fashion staff and you feel is appropriate. Just to remind you that this evening, of course, is, is not a final approval, but simply a request to transmit our land use amendment to the state for further review of the various state agencies. And, and while this review is ongoing with the state agencies, we will continue working with staff, of course, on moving forward with a specific development plan that our goal is to bring before you at the time of the adoption hearing. So not only will you have a picture of the land use map, however it's decided upon, but hopefully a specific development plan that you can ensure provides the quality of housing that you look for in St. Louis County. With that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions and I'd like to reserve an opportunity to respond to any public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this item, please?
My name is John Ferrick and I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for any homeowners groups or anything else tonight. I have a little bit of a concern over this residential high on any part of this commercial, or the, uh, excuse me, on this property. It's kind of high density. I don't have a problem with residential urban. I don't see why the whole place couldn't be residential urban. Five units to the acre is 361 units, so I hope you all don't give away the store, as the store, as the saying goes, giving away density. That's all I have to say about this.
Charles Grandy, again, I'm also speaking just for myself. This application came before the Planning and Zoning Board and I think we need to remember it was, uh, the vote was to disapprove it, to pass it along with a recommendation, let it not be forwarded. This plan, even modified as it is, is these, is more dense than any other parcel in the area. This is the intersection of 25th Street and Edwards Road. It was logical as a commercial parcel. It's fairly logical as a residential urban parcel, but the concept of more than 10 units per acre on this particular piece of property, combined with the impact on roads and schools and the increases in, in our problems with the schools, makes, makes no sense at all. I think the planning and zoning recommendation is correct. And at the very least, if you're not inclined to turn this down tonight, the suggestion that I would have is that the mod, the new plan or the modifications, or with the new plan and modifications, the applicant should be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Board and get a new recommendation from them.
Yes, ma'am?
Pamela Hammer, I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Board and I was sure, even though I couldn't recall the vote, that I had voted against this. I'm assuming that it did, as Mr. Grandy said, it was failed by the planning board.
Yes. Okay.
We, we spent a lot of time on this, talking about the pros and cons. One of the things that I do remember is Ms. Hensley pointed out in the proposal that they indicated that children would be able to walk to school. One of the schools isn't even in their zone, so they wouldn't be walking. So we want to make sure that that's out of the proposal. But you're looking at going from five units an acre to 15 units an acre, three times the number of kids in our schools. And I know you've heard that from me a million times and you'll keep hearing it until, until we finally get through. Three times the number of kids in our schools. We already need 23 new schools in the next 20 years. So please look at what happens when we go with these increased densities from five units an acre to 15, and I hope that you And I hope that you would turn this down and send them back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Hopkins Blanton Willis, and I live on Edwards Road. I've lived there for five years. I love the horse community. We don't know everybody because we live afar away from each other, and we enjoy that. That's why we moved there. And I'm sure, unlike me, I really didn't realize this was going on until late in the game, but I'm sure if everyone else in that community that I live in, which is just west of where this spot is being worked at, I'm sure that everyone would be here saying, please, don't change our community. Let's leave it the way that it is. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Ferguson. I'm an attorney with the law firm Rudin Makowski, here on behalf of the applicant. Just a couple of things to follow up on what Mr. Mathis brought to you and staff's recommendation. We had a request, notwithstanding the normal 500-foot notice to all the property owners, to make a special effort to notify the properties immediately to the west of the project there on the south side of Edwards Road. And what I'd like to do, introduce into the record, is individual letters that were sent to the six property owners that are immediately west of the property, on the west side of the canal right of way, and on the east side of Old Edwards Road, which runs north-south there down to Five Mile Creek. We would have telephoned each of those property owners, except four of them have unlisted phone numbers. So to be fair to all, we sent them individual letters explaining briefly what we were doing, what we were requesting, and asking them to please get in touch with us if they had any questions or concerns. We did not receive comments or calls from any of them. In addition, I would like to remind the Commissioners and the public that this property currently has a commercial land use and zoning, which would allow for a commercial project in excess of 100,000 square feet. The traffic would be two or three times the intensity of what we are requesting. In addition, what we're trying to do is solve a housing mix need for, especially this part of the county, as you well know, there are not a lot of new development going on in the Fort Pierce area. Most of it is down south, Port St. Lucie, or out west, or up north. This developer's coming in, they have a history of what they look at as sort of infill projects, taking smaller parcels, putting in a mix of townhome, fee-ownership townhomes, single-family homes. This parcel fits that. Staff has looked at it closely, as they indicated the RM piece to the northeast, up on 25th Street, developed at 10 units per acre. With the modification that we are requesting through staff, we are coming in with slightly, I mean, just barely over 10 units per acre maximum. We are going to be developing in all likelihood at slightly less than 10 units per acre. So in our opinion, we are keeping with the character of the area. We're providing a mix of housing needs for the area, and hopefully a shot in the arm for the area. It's been the developer's history that when they come in with a new project, that the existing housing in the area, the values increase because people realize it's now a viable area that people are looking forward to moving into. So we would expect that to happen as well. Specifically, as to the modification of our request, we do not disagree with Mr. Kelly's characterization that maybe three land use categories on this piece is a little bit overly complicated. So what we would like to do is drop back down to an earlier request that was an outgrowth of conversations we had with staff, and officially request that the 300 feet on the east of the property, as it borders 25th Street, so the 300 feet would run east-west, and it would run the full length north-south of the property, that that 300 feet be designated R H, and that the remainder of the property be designated RM. So you would have roughly eight and three-quarter acres of R H, and the remainder of the 35 acres, so approximately 26-plus acres, would be RM. That would be an effective maximum density of 370 units. Again, given your land development regulations and PUD regulations, and in conversations with staff, I don't believe we'll be coming in at 370 units. It will be slightly less than that, and obviously will be scrutinized by staff. And as Mark said, that plan will be coming back to you prior to the second public hearing after this comes back from DCA. So with that being said, we would request approval and transmittal to the state of our amendment to the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan to amend the land use designation on this parcel to a combination of R H for approximately eight and three-quarters acres and RM for the remainder. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Perry. I'm the president of the White City Improvement Club, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm opposed to development of properties where they're putting in this amount of homes. I think that with all the development going on and the developers coming in, we're in need of ranchettes. We're in need of homes on one acre, two acres. I think they'd be sold very quickly. That would not allow as many children into the schools, which we're having problems with the overcrowding in the schools, the law enforcements, the roads. I'm opposed to this. The White City Improvement Club has been sending letters of concern for the streets and overdevelopment. And I'm asking you to look at this. I would ask you not to approve this, to look into other means for them to develop this. And I just felt I needed to come and speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public present that wishes to address the board on this Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and return to the board at this point.
Madam Chair, can I have a question here procedurally? No matter how many times I hear this, I have to hear it again. Where is this in the whole scheme of things? This is a land use change, but not a zoning, so they can't propose a PUD at this point? Is that what I'm hearing? It's very confusing.
At this point, Commissioner Barnes, we're, they're requesting transmittal. That's what we need to do tonight. You'll be determining whether you want to transmit this proposed future land use change to the state for their review. And then in a number of months, it'll be coming back to you for a final adoption if you desire to do so.
Okay.
It requires two public hearings to change the future land use designation.
I understand that. But where does the PUD process where we would get details about the type of development? Where does that enter? Is that later down the road?
Yes, I believe the applicant indicated that they would have it for us at the final adoption hearing. I'll let them speak.
Well, I'm asking procedurally, not what goes on in this case. I'm asking, once land use is changed, what details, I mean, what guarantees would we have now if we change land use as to what kind of development we'd end up with? That's the easiest way to say it.
I suppose there is, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barnes, I suppose there is no guarantee at this level. Typically, the rezoning, and in this case, I expect it to be a PUD that's requested, but typically that comes after the future land use change. The applicant in this case has indicated that he will bring it forward at the same time as the adoption, so that you can consider them at the same time. Typically, it wouldn't come that quickly, but that's what he's indicated at this point.
And you, and the applicant has now, tonight, changed what he's asking for?
The applicant, by way of the drawing that's up, I guess, behind me and on all our monitors, has indicated that he would like to have a future land use change of R H for the 300 feet that lie immediately, the 300-foot north-south band lying immediately west of 25th Street, and RM for the balance of the property. That would limit his future density to 370 units, was I think the number that they gave us, which is 10.2 or 3 per acre, which is comparable to crystal sands above it on the other side of 25th Street, and is less than the original request.
Okay. Well, personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think this needs a little more work. I wouldn't out of hand reject this, but I would want some guarantees even before we move forward. I'd like to, this is directly adjacent to Forest Grove, I believe it's a middle school.
Right.
So I would like to see the developer approach the school board, because as we've heard, there are concerns, and find out if the school board could use a little more property. I'd like to find out if there's a plan to restore the flood plain. I think there's four acres of 100-year flood plain. I mean, there are a lot of, seems to me, things you could do for the community to give us some guarantee before you ask for more density. And I don't know if I'd approve it, but I would just like to see a little more thought go into this whole development. But I do understand, with it being commercial, we may end up with a big, enormous asphalt parking lot with lots and lots of traffic. So I would actually rather see homes on it than, you know, a very huge shopping center, which we could not turn down. But I'd like to see a mixture of uses and some cooperation with the school board. Do you know yet what kind of recreation facilities you would be building for your residents so they wouldn't be relying on all the existing facilities in the county?
Commissioner Barnes, is it?
Or are we that far along?
We're not quite there yet, but if I may, address your concerns. As I believe you all know, the Comprehensive Plan can only be amended twice a year, and you have to get into the cycle so that you get transmitted. Otherwise, you then have to wait to the second series and...
When's the deadline?
I would defer to staff, but I believe it's soon.
We're in our current cycle right now. This is actually the last petition to work through this pile. Otherwise, he's going to be sitting at least six months.
And Commissioner, that is why we made a commitment to staff, and we're making a commitment to you, to bring in a plan for the property that the staff can review. We can address those issues that you've raised. We've heard them. We will look to see what we can do to address them. You will get a look at the PUD, which is where you then have the authority and power to either say yea or nay as to what actually goes on the property. But in order to get to that point, in order to spend the resources to develop a plan and sit down with staff, we need this first step. And unfortunately, we can't wait a month or two months, because as Dennis just said, we fall out of the cycle and will miss this transmittal. There is that window of opportunity while the Department of Community Affairs is reviewing this for us to work on the actual plan.
So we would, we would, we would be able to, we wouldn't be passing the land use at this point. We'd just be telling the state, we, basically, we might consider it a future date if we like the details that you add later.
That's correct. This is not final adoption. This is simply transmittal to the state so that they can then review it and provide you with comments. There is that final public hearing where it will come back to you, for you to make a final decision. And we're making a commitment to you to have a PUD plan in front of you at the same time so you can see whether or not it makes sense to approve the land use and therefore be able to apply the PUD that we've come up with.
And the maximum would be 370 under this, but once you look at it and you put a little modern design to it and not just give us the same stuff we've seen for years, it may be less than 370.
I can almost assure you that to get 370 units on this property with your land development regulations and your staff scrutiny would be very difficult. But in order to keep it simple, we've chose, and in the event that the PUD doesn't go forward and you still approve the land use to have the property where it's in a developable shape, 300 feet makes sense. And if I may, just sort of clarify the record very quickly. This went to the LPA twice. The first time it went to the LPA, the request with staff's concurrent and recommendation of approval was for the entire property to be R H. The LPA expressed some serious concerns about that huge number, even though we assured them there would be a PUD process where they would get a shot at looking at the development. But in order to address their concerns, we requested it be tabled. We went back, we sat down with staff, we came up with a split of the property into an R H and an RM category. That's what went back to the LPA. So the LPA did see a split, and not, the vote at that meeting was five to one. Ms. Hammer was not there. Mr. Trias, as a member of the LPA, voted, in essence, in favor of the land use change, but there were five votes against it. We've come forward on that. So we are going back to the plan essentially that was presented to the LPA, which is a split of R H and RM. But the bottom line is, Commissioners, you will get a very hard look at the PUD that will actually develop the property. That's where you have the control, what goes over there. But again, we can't get there unless we get over this hurdle, which is simply a preliminary step. You have the right to deny it at the final public hearing if you don't like what you've seen.
Okay. One other question. You, your client is actually going to do the development, or are you all just investors and you'll find a buyer and they'll develop it?
At this point in time, the purchaser of the property would also be the developer and is working with planning firms and will be submitting the development to the staff.
What communities have they developed before? Are these, you know, they at least moderate to high-income?
If I may, I'll let...
Or valuation residential unit?
I'll let Mr. Delfino, who's a representative of the company, address that.
My name is Alejandro Alfino, Home Dynamics. We, what we provide is first-time buyer homes and, or second buyer homes, excuse me. And we're providing a townhouse community, with single-family homes. We have recreational facilities. We'll have walking trails throughout the lakes in the community. It's a whole one，在 package community what we're providing. And of course, if it's, of course, the pricing would be dependent on what the market is going to afford. Again, this is not going to be development until maybe by the end of the year or beginning of first quarter of next year. So whatever the market can bear at that time, that's what we'll be selling this product for. There won't be no rentals. There will be no rentals. It will be all townhouses for sale, ownership, and single-family homes for ownership and sale also.
And can you give us an idea? I know they're not asking us for any approval of anything tonight, but without, basically without any of our approval, or to change our ordinances or zoning or land use, what could they do on this site? When you tell us the amount of square feet of commercial, that doesn't really mean a lot to me. What is a similar-sized shopping center that we could all understand?
Thirty-five acres of commercial is very large.
I mean, is that Orange Blossom Mall? Is that?
Sable Palm is probably in that range.
Sable Palm. Okay. They could do that without any approval of, or any changes to...
They have land use and zoning for that today.
Madam Chair. You stated that what you brought to us tonight is the same thing that went to planning and zoning?
Slight variation, actually. What went to planning and zoning at the LPA was a slightly higher density. We had split the property more in half. The property's approximately a little over 1,200 feet wide, and we had roughly split it, you know, 600 and 600, and it came in at over 400 units. But we're modifying it and trying to slice it down and get closer to what we feel we'll be able to put on the property. be able to put on the property without having too high a density that seems to cause a concern. So it's slightly less dense than what was presented to the LPA.
So you indicated you don't want to go back to planning and zoning? I mean, they voted on it, and now you've changed it, and we rely on the debate in planning and zoning about these kind of projects. But are you indicating you don't have time to go back to planning and zoning?
Commissioner, at this point, I would defer to staff, but I don't believe we have time. I believe all of the prior Comprehensive Plan amendments came to you at your last meeting, because it was crowded and the timing, and because we had to go back to LPA because we tabled it that one time in order to address their concerns, we are out of time for any further public hearings. Again, this is just the transmittal stage of the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I can take a stab at this first, for the record, I need to put on the record that I did meet with the representative a couple weeks ago in my office, and some of the questions that were brought up today were the very ones that I asked, what are you going to do for the community that's affected by this? And Commissioner Barnes, I'm right here with you. When I'm looking at those numbers on the commercial site versus what they're offering, knowing 25th Street is not done yet, there's no room for expansion of the possibility of ever six-lining the stretch of 25th between Edwards and Virginia Avenue that's under state jurisdiction, and they're on record having stated that, I don't know where the commercial would go if it stayed there. My one concern is, you keep referencing the Crystal Lakes. Does staff have an idea how long ago that was approved? That's been many, many years ago. And...
Mid-'80s, probably.
And every thing else along that area that was recently done or being considered to be done is much lower in density as it not? Even if you continue further off the map and go on down 25th Street?
You work your way south of this site, south of the railroad tracks, you're basically looking at development densities in the two-unit and four-unit range.
And that's my concern, right there. It does change the flavor of the entire neighborhood. And as I told you that day, I live in that neighborhood, and I have, I'm being honest and open with you. Right down there on Sunrise Boulevard, the city recently approved a development. And no consideration, to my knowledge, other than the county's push, was taken into the traffic council on Sunrise and Edwards, the fact that there are no red lights anywhere other than 25th Street, Edwards, Sunrise, and Leander. So I'm really shy of going up to that 15 and even the 370, if that's what it's going to be there. As Commissioner Barnes said to you, I would have a better comfort level if I knew exactly what you're going to contribute, as I mentioned to you. You've got Five Mile Creek right around that corner. You have Ag right across the street. And there's my concern.
Commissioner, I think my only response is to reiterate that, again, this is just the initial step. You will be able to take as hard a look as you need to at the actual plan. We have had conversations, we staff, we understand. For example, there's that 40-foot canal right-of-way on the western property that runs down to Five Mile Creek. We will explore some kind of access or trail system, or some connection. You know, if the county ever wants to develop that, it would obviously take concurrence with the school board. But those are some of the things that we will look at and explore, and see if we can't add to the community. Understand your reservations about the density. I think that this is an area that's on the fringe of the higher-dense type of development, while it may not be, or it may be slightly higher-dense than a single-family development that's been in the area for a long time, directly across the street and to the northeast. Again, that is the type of thing that you can look at, the actual development, and see whether you think it fits into the character of the neighborhood and will add to the neighborhood. Those are the concerns that we will have to address when we come back with the detailed plans. But once again, we can't get there unless we get over this hurdle.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I'm sorry if I, did I interrupt you? We could pull the plug on this at any time with a letter to, since we're not, we're not giving them any rights at this point, right? If we pass this, we're not, they don't have any rights at all. We're not giving them, giving them anything. So a letter to DCA would basically pull the plug if we, next week, decided to do something different. Is that right? I mean, we would take formal action to rescind what we did tonight if we approved it tonight. What I'm getting at is, the best way to predict what someone's going to do in the future is what they did in the past. The staff looked at any of the communities that this particular developer has built anywhere in Florida?
We have not.
I'd really like to see a list and maybe tour, or just see pictures, or help to, you know, people in other areas where they have a track record. So you all, where have you all built before?
Commissioner Barnes, the developer does have a website. It's at www.Homedynamics.com. I believe it's all one word. They do, they do have past and current projects. Most of their projects are sold out, but they still have some information even on the sold-out projects. They do have model home pictures and other information that is available.
Well, I would think staff could do some independent research as well, but, okay.
Along lines with what Commissioner Barnes just said, what we're being asked to do here is approve transmittal. Once we've approved transmittal, that doesn't mean we've actually approved the request. We're just approving sending it to DCA for comment.
You're sending it to DCA for their review, which will involve also their distribution to the other agencies, and to gather everybody's input, to come back to you to ultimately consider a final adoption.
But we still retain all our options when it turns to us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, with that in mind, as Commissioner Hutchinson pointed out, and as Commissioner Barnes said as well, I think we're all pretty much agreed that commercial in that area would provide its own particular set of problems. And with the widening of 25th Street shortly to become reality, we hope, I can't quite picture large estate-type homes on 25th Street anymore. I think we're going to require something a little more, dare I use the word dense, in that particular area. I'm kind of concerned that what I've got here is kind of a fuzzy line that indicates what it is you want. But I think, given the fact that you have agreed to bring us a PUD at the time of adoption, that gives me a certain degree of comfort. And there will be time for us to look into your, into this further, as the other agencies look at it as well. I'm inclined to look at transmitting it this evening, and we can do our homework between now and the time the other folks' comments come back, and we may have our own comments at that point in time as well, further comments. So did I, I don't recall that I closed the public hearing. Was there anybody else present that wished to speak to us on this matter? I think we will close the public hearing at this time. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Any further comments from the board? Yes?
Yeah, I just want to say that you've heard the community's concerns here tonight. You got a vote in P&amp;Z against you. But, you know, I think, I would like to see, if this were residential or Ag zoning currently or land use currently, I'd, without hesitation, vote against it. But I think a big shopping center with a sea of asphalt is not a good use for that property either, and I understand your problem with the density in the area, but I don't, I'm not sure these people are going to want the problems with all the traffic commercial's going to bring, the lighting all night long. It'll ruin, you know, your darkness in the neighborhood. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that might be worse about commercial. So, but what I'm saying to the developer, if it passes tonight, you've heard a lot of concerns, and you've actually received a negative vote, and you are probably going to have to do a better job than you've done in the other community, coming up with something that fits into the neighborhood and takes care of our concerns. I would move that we transmit it, but also with that, it's staff research, what this developer's done in other communities, and if it turns out that it's not something to our liking, I would certainly reserve the right to bring this back up and vote against it, and tell DCA we're not interested. So that's a long-winded motion. But, and I would expect you to work with the school board and see if they might need some more space for Forest Grove. That might resolve some of the community's problems with the impacts on our school system.
Just to reiterate, as I understand it, denial is still one of our options beyond this point. We have a motion.
Madam Chair, can I just get clarification on which one we're making the motion on? Is it the recommended that's written, the recommended that the petitioner gave with the three different zoned areas, or is it going back to the 300 feet on the east?
That's a great question. And I was thinking the 300 feet on the east, I thought that was the last proposal on the table.
I want to make sure that's what...
So that was, that was the limits of my motion.
So that's 300 feet on the east is RH, and RM on the rest of the site? Is that what?
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding, and that's what I was addressing when I was speaking.
Madam Chair, I'm going to second and just reiterate Commissioner Barnes's words to petitioner. I would also like to suggest that you have homes which are directly affected on the...